Okay, good evening. Let's call the meeting to order. At this time, it is now 8:00 PM. And it is Monday, April 13th. So if we could, let's all please start as usual with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone this evening and thank you for joining us. At this time, City Clerk, could you verify that we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor, I have one, two, three, four, five, six members of council present. I have Councilmember Wolfley, Councilmember Indebumado, Councilmember Harrison, Councilmember Steph, Mayor Proten, Boffo, and yourself, Mayor Adams.
Okay. All right. We're willing to entertain motions.
Well, first, Mr. Mayor, let me talk about the, what's the new business here for a moment. We have two items under consideration, under item 4A. One of them is an ordinance for the City Council, of the City Council of the City of Bowie, Maryland, approving and adopting budget, a budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2021, the introduction of that ordinance. And the second is introduction of a resolution of the Council of the City of Bowie, Maryland, adopting a capital improvement program for fiscal years 2021 through 2026. And that, those are the items up for consideration in item 4B, under new business. It's all yours, sir.
Okay, thank you, as I said. We're open for motions at this time. Comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
I, I move that we accept the introduction of the budget ordinance for 2021.
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion at this point? If not, call for the vote. All in favor, by aye?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
On the public hearing.
Okay, we will now go into the public hearing.
One, I'm sorry, Mayor, we need a motion to introduce the resolution for the CIP.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce Resolution R 24-20 for consideration by the Council.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. Okay, City Clerk, can we now move into the public hearing?
Yes, Mayor, so we have received a total of six testimonies. Five are written testimonies, which I'll read for the record, and one is a video that was submitted by Mr. Allen, and we'll play that one last after I do these five readings. So the first one is from a resident Joshua Wooton. And he says, "Good evening, my name is Joshua Wooton, and I chair the Bowie Multimodal Access and Public Spaces subgroup of the Bowie Green Team. But today I am submitting this testimony as an individual citizen of the City of Bowie who is in favor of the implementation of a number of items included in the city's FY 2021 budget. Number one, I applaud and thank the city manager for the budget plan to repair and replace segments along the Northview Drive Trail this fiscal year and over the next few years. These changes will result in a safer, more inviting, and accessible trail segment that will better integrate into the city's trail network. Number two, I applaud and thank the city manager for the Bowie Heritage Trail construction funding budgeted for FY 2021. Old Town Bowie lacks the access to trails compared to other parts of Bowie, and the completion of the Bowie Heritage Trail in FY 2021 is vital to providing this much-needed trail access to Old Town Bowie and also has the capability to draw in visitors from outside of Old Town Bowie. Number three, I applaud and thank the city manager for the addition of the Bowie Trails Master Plan as a new CIP item and funding for the inventory of the current condition of the Bowie Byway in FY 2021. This work will allow the city to be better plan how to tackle implementation of the Byway. I ask that consideration be given to including the following in the FY 2021 budget. Funding for a multimodal transportation specialist position. This position provides many benefits to the city with one mayor, major, one being the searching and applying for transportation grants that, if awarded, save the city money on expenses that can be used elsewhere. Funding for the Bowie Railroad Museum placemaking project as the implementation of this will result in an additional recreational amenity for Old Town Bowie. Thank you for your consideration." Next testimony is from Resident John Teasdale out of Midwood Lane. Presentation to the Bowie City Council to encourage implementation of the Trail Master Plan and creation of a multimodal transportation specialist position. Active transportation trail networks can enhance communities in several ways, including: First, enable more users to connect to their destinations by walking or biking. Second, improve people's health and reduce the cost of healthcare. Three, reduce greenhouse gases and oil dependence. And fourth, encourage economic investment in our community. The Rails to Trails Conservancy has estimated that a modest public investment in completing trail and active transportation networks within and between communities will deliver a national annual economic return of $73 to $138 billion. Thus, a high-quality trail system in Bowie can potentially contribute as much to the infrastructure of the city as a dedicated sports or recreational facility and should be given equal priority in both improvement and maintenance. The FY 2021 budget provides important support for developing and maintaining trail infrastructure in Bowie. Implementation of the Bowie Byway Trail, which is the core recommendation within the new Bowie Trail Master Plan, will be accommodated by funding to the Planning Department to conduct a comprehensive inventory of the current status of Byway connectivity. In addition, the new page in the CIP CR-51 devoted to Trail Master Plan projects will ensure a placeholder for trail projects as they become prioritized, designed, and conducted. The continuation of hiker-biker trail projects in the CIP CR-27 will add much-needed maintenance, repair, and safety modifications to city trails. However, a new staff position will be required in order to effectively implement the Trail Master Plan and the Complete Streets Policy and to effectively integrate walking, biking, and automotive transportation modes within the city. Creation of a multimodal transportation specialist in the Planning Department will provide expertise in design of multimodal transportation networks within the city. Assure compliance with local and regional engineering and safety requirements. Advise inclusion of state-of-the-art multimodal networks within new development sites. And research and obtain grants that expedite all transportation projects. Without a dedicated staff position with a transportation background, it will be difficult to, for current staff to make time to properly implement the Trail Master Plan and Complete Streets Policy. I encourage council to add this position to the FY 2021 budget. Thank you. Next one is from Ken and Patty McCahey, residents of Chafford Lane. Now that the City of Bowie has an updated Trails Master Plan, it is important that progress be made in implementing the vision. Biking and walking are important in Bowie, even more so with the current circumstances due to COVID-19. We have observed a substantial increase in people going for walks and bike rides to get some exercise and relief from being self-quarantined. This simply is important to able to get around safely. We strongly believe that having discovered or rediscovering these ways of getting around and exercising that they will not want to give them up. We are pleased to see that the Capital Improvement Program budget includes funding in support of the Trails and Bowie Heritage Trails CR-44, Hiker-Biker Trails CR-27, and Bowie Trails Master Plan CR-51. These are important components to maintaining and connecting the network. These efforts should be funded. We are looking forward to the needed improvements along Northview Drive. This is a major walking and biking corridor that needs attention. The city could also benefit tremendously from having dedicated staff in the form of a multimodal transportation specialist. Ideally, the person in this position would advocate for prioritized and managed implementation of the Trails Master Plan. There would also be overlap in support of the planning and execution of the Complete Streets Plan. We believe there are a large number of grants and funding opportunities that this specialist could be pursuing that would help fund the city's efforts. Having a specialist with the correct knowledge and skills will make future improvements more cost-effective and, at the same time, realize faster progress. We would like the city to thoughtfully consider this investment in the FY 2021 budget. Thank you. The next one, it's submitted by Verna Teasdale and Isabel Pokerol on behalf of the Old Town Bowie Arts and Entertainment Steering Committee. The subject is a request for $30,000 to fund the Old Town Bowie Arts and Heritage Festival. Thank you to you and the city staff for continuing to keep the city running efficiently, effectively, and safely under difficult and dangerous conditions. Our statement this evening is a follow-up to the February 18, 2020 Resolution R-19-20, which you approved in supporting the efforts of the people organized to promote and support arts and entertainment in Old Town Bowie in their efforts to organize and operate an arts and heritage event. The Old Town Bowie Arts and Heritage Steering Committee is the organization working to establish and operate an inaugural event, a festival, as the first step toward revitalizing Old Bowie. This event supports the city's desire to attract more people to Old Bowie and become an income generator for the city, as well as provide a new venue for arts and entertainment and support the history and heritage of the whole of Bowie. We appreciate that the FY 2021 proposed budget provides funds to complete the Old Bowie Heritage Trail. However, the proposed budget has a serious omission by not funding improvements to the Bowie Railroad Museum. These two improvements would add to the attraction of the festival and be an asset to Old Bowie as an arts and heritage district. When Dustin Cousin presented the resolution in February, you asked when the festival would be and what the festival would cost. Originally, the event was planned for September 2020, which now is not practical. The revised schedule is for the event to be in May of 2021. Depending upon the economies of scale that the city can provide, the budget is $30,000. Your financial help is needed to make this event a reality. Your financial help is consistent with the February 18, 2020 Resolution and FY 2021 Proposed Budget for Economic Development Objective 4 on page 74. The Steering Committee has continued to plan the festival, but without the funding support of the City Council, the committee is severely handicapped until it has a financial base. With your joint effort, we can empower Old Bowie to become the arts, entertainment, and heritage center of our community. Thank you for your consideration of our request. The next one is from the Huntington Heritage Society, Isabel Pokerol, the Vice President. The Huntington Heritage Society was founded in 1986 for the specific goal of furthering the history of the Huntington section of Bowie. As you are aware, Huntington is the birthplace of Bowie. Today, from a tiny railroad town centered around the depot, the city has grown to well over 50,000 residents. Bowie, old and new, is a place where the past meets the present. Our entire history is important. With this in mind, we highlight the following. The funding to finish the Heritage Trail needs to be brought to the forefront. We happily see the funding to complete the Heritage Trail in next year's proposed budget, FY 21 Operating and Capital Improvement. The trail commemorates the history of the early days of our city, something often overlooked in the spread of housing developments, shopping centers, and major roadways. It will add to Huntington's future economic growth. As you know, the inclusion of an arts and entertainment district in Huntington has been under works. This, the trail, is an important step in that process, and we support the funding of this project, respectively submitted by Isabel Pokerol. Okay, now I will share my screen and the last testimony, and this is from Gary Allen.
In that presentation, I had the opportunity to outline a number of proposals that had budget implications. I don't have the time in this context to review entirely in detail all the comments that I made, but really would just want to highlight several of the ideas that we shared with you at that time. Specifically, I'd like to call your attention to three or four ideas. The first is staff positions for sustainability. And we highlighted in that testimony in February, three staff positions that we believe are essential to moving ahead in the environmental area in the year ahead. The first and most important is that the city create and hire a city sustainability officer. That is someone who's in charge of coordinating across the entire city government, all of our response and to environmental initiatives, and to look at the opportunities that might be created. We've recommended more than 100 items over the past decade. A number of these are still pending, and obviously, your staff has some additional input they would like to make in this process, which to date, they have been doing informally. Here's a chance for you to bring that together, as many other communities across the nation have, into a formal position and perhaps a more formal process. Secondly, it's our thoughts that you need an additional social media outreach specialist whose job it is to inform citizens about the environmental choices and acts of green that they can undertake. It seems particularly important in light of the current crisis when so many people are spending time at home. It's a chance for people to reexamine their behavior vis-à-vis the environment and the community, and to do that, I think the city can do a better job of informing citizens about what the opportunities are. Obviously, you focused a lot on the current crisis. This would give you an augmented staff position with which to broaden your coverage into other areas. In our judgment, outreach is the Achilles' heel of many of the city's activities. This would strengthen that weakness. And finally, over the last two and a half years, we've continually drawn your attention to the need for a multimodal transportation specialist as we look to a way for the Planning Department to integrate a variety of transportation choices in its activities and review. Having a specific staff position whose responsibilities focus on this opportunity and to complete the Masters Trails Program and the other transportation initiatives adopted in just the past year would significantly strengthen that. Finally, I want to remind you, before I conclude my comments, that you have a great deal of flexibility as you look to the budget ahead. I'm concerned, as I've read the budget, that it looks like a straitjacket for many of you, restricting your choices. But as a council, you need not feel restricted unless you yourselves restrict your choices. And one of the choices that too often the past council over the past decade has restricted itself is the refusal to review opportunities for new revenue. This is your opportunity not to tie your hands, but to look at whether or not useful, necessary, and essential tax resources should be made available in the coming year to help support both the initiatives I've outlined here and others that you yourselves may choose in response to staff and citizen proposals. Take a look at the tax rate. Don't feel constrained that it must be a flat line forever. It has been so for over a decade. In that sense, I believe the council has tied its hand and destroyed its flexibility. You have the opportunity to change that policy incrementally over the next several years. Please consider doing so this year as a part of this budget process. We strongly support a penny for the environment. It would do an enormous amount and create a great many opportunities to support these initiatives and several others that we have talked about and that you yourselves have considered. Thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to working with you on the implementation of these objectives. And recall that the Environmental Advisory Committee stands ready to be an asset in your policymaking process on a number of initiatives and concerns that you face in this budget process. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Mayor, that's all the testimonies that I have for the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I think you're on mute.
Still on mute, Ms. Mayor.
Your microphone is muted.
Okay, sorry about that. Mayor Proten, were you saying something?
No, just letting you know that you were on mute.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I would like to take a moment and just thank all of the citizens for joining us today. I would like to thank all of the citizens for doing all the things they are to help us within this pandemic. I would like to take a moment, and I think we would be remiss if we didn't just say, "Our hearts go out to all of those who have been negatively impacted by this pandemic." We have some of our city family who have suffered through this, as well as all of the other families. And please know that our hearts and prayers go out to you in doing so. Having said that, before we did this, I was just curious if any of the council members had any comments they wanted to quickly make? Okay, having none, any other comments about the public hearing? If not?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adjourn and move to budget work session number one.
Second. It's been moved and properly second, that we adjourn and move into work. All in favor, please answer with an aye.
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 Motion carries. Hey, thank you, everyone, and thank you to the citizens. We appreciate all you're doing, and again, please stay safe. God bless.
Okay, so now you guys are just going straight into budget work session, and you'll just stay connected to this meeting. Mr. Lock, Mr. Burton, you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Mayor, City Council, welcome to work session number one. As you know, we're still on television, so a lot of what I'm saying is for you and the residents out there who are listening to it. I'd like to start out, as I mentioned in the email that I sent you, by presenting the budget to you by going through the parts of the letter that I wrote to you dated April 9, 2020, with some adjustments. It reads as follows. The Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, I am pleased to submit for your review and approval of the proposed budget fiscal year 2021. This budget reflects the guidance provided by the city's strategic plan that was adopted in July 2016 and my professional assessment with regard to what is necessary to deliver quality services to the residents of Bowie. The proposed general fund budget for FY 2021 equals $67,653,000. This represents a growth over 2020 budget of 12%, excuse me, 14.5% and $8,544,300. This amount includes a transfer of $2,171,600 to the Equipment Acquisition Fund and $4,999, excuse me, $97,600 to the Six-Year Capital Improvement Program, for which we will discuss this morning. The Water and Sewer Fund has proposed a budget of $11,795,100, representing a 43.9% increase over 2020, primarily due to capital spending, for which we'll discuss at a later date. The pandemic and budget. Development of the city's proposed budget this year is marked by the unique times of a global pandemic beginning during its development. The expenditure requests and revenue projections were all developed prior to the gubernatorial executive order to close establishments and require social distancing. At the writing of this transmittal letter, numerous businesses have closed their doors and, to customers, stock markets dropped an unprecedented amount and made unprecedented gains, and reports of significant unemployment have begun to come in. These representations of economic distress are arguably on the leading edge of what is to come. Recover time for these factors is not known and could be a swift return or protracted challenge to the nation's economy. Further, decline could become even greater than what is seen today. Uncertainty is ever-present. In consideration for this budget presentation, the budget leadership discussed whether revisions to the budget was necessary in light of the pandemic. While since the city has estimated revenues conservatively and estimates of expenditures are liberal, there is some room for economic impacts of the budget. The city's largest source of revenue, of course, is real property taxes, projected to bring $30 million in a fiscal year. In the first year of the triennial assessment cycle, real property impacts to the economy on property values will not be realized this fiscal year nor in subsequent two fiscal years. I'd like to transition and talk about city services. two fiscal years. I'd like to transition and talk about city services. Providing reliable and efficient services has been one of the hallmarks of Bowie's city government and personally the reason why I moved to Bowie. The city council recognizes that when it's identified outstanding public service, one of the core values in the 2016 plan. I'd like to take a moment to, for the sake of the television audience in particular, to list the services that are included in this budget. They include animal control, communications and outreach, concerts, development, review and planning, economic development, emergency management, which is premier right now, obviously, green Bowie, leaf collection, mosquito control, park maintenance, police, recreation, recycling collection, rental housing and property inspection, small business assistance, snow plowing, special events, stormwater management, street lighting, street sidewalk and trail maintenance, trash collection twice a week, water and sewer for 7,800 employees, customers, yard waste collection once a week on Wednesdays, youth and family services, and we maintain the following recreation facilities: numerous ball fields, a city gym, a city ice arena, museums, parks, playground, playhouse, skate park, and senior center. So those are just some of the services, the plethora of services that are provided by the city of Bowie. We'll, I'm gonna bypass the revenues because Byron's gonna talk about that in some detail immediately following my presentation. I'll talk about expenditures. Expenditure trends for the past few budgets has Bowie exceeding its revenue. This anticipated to continue to 2021 and also forecast for 2022 through 2026, even with proposed tax increases in those future years. Prior decisions in expanding the police force, adding a call center, adding debt of the Bowie Plex, Ice Plex, funding required stormwater improvements from the general fund, and maintaining an excellent depth of services in the community have benefited the residents. However, the amount of the city's taxable base, challenges in the overall economy, and maintenance of property tax rates contribute to the negative relationship between expenditures and revenue. The budget was also developed with input from department directors to maintain services, service levels in the city, and meet the demands of the city of Bowie's residents for services. Maintaining numerous facilities, parks, roadways, trails is resource intensive and requires people to do the work. Like most cities, Bowie is a human capital run organization. Nearly two-thirds of the general fund expenditures are on staff necessary for the city's work. The city competes in the labor market to attract and retain employees, and recently, low unemployment rates, which we expect to return, added to staffing challenges with competition for appropriate labor. The city of Bowie does not have a lot of flexibility when it comes to personnel costs. We are constrained by labor agreements, and the city is tied up in compensation increases for years to come. With conservative spending practices and which is a practice that I developed years ago and is followed here, the city has regularly come below the budget expectations, and we expect that to continue. To jump down to one following paragraph there before staffing, the city's debt service for 2021 of $22.34 million represents about three and a half percent of the city's general fund expenditures. The city council's policy is that the ratio of debt expenditures as a percentage of general fund exclusive to debt repay to the, by the water and sewer fund shall not exceed eight percent. So we're operating within the scope there. One other thing I would mention about revenue is that this budget will be the 11th consecutive year without a real property increase. And as you know, property taxes represent 57.4% of the general fund revenues collected by the city of Bowie, Bowie's largest revenue category. I'd like to talk a bit about staffing. Very important to us. Several changes in staff positions are proposed for 2021. The cost shown for these additional reflect both salaries and fringe benefits. The city manager's office position and there's an additional staff and reclassification are requested. Within the city clerk's office, a new administrative assistant is requested to assist the clerk and provide assistance to the city council. We identified this need a year and a half ago, and of course, with the new council and new technology and new requests, that is a vital position to give Ms. Hernandez some assistance and provide quality support to the city council. The budget is presented, this, excuse me, this cost, the cost of this full-time position will be $56,163. The budget is presented with a request to reclassify also the director of communications from a Y-19 to a Y-20, which is an organizational adjustment since that position has the authority and responsibilities equal to a director. Community services positions. Transfers, reclassifications were requested. Maintenance positions are presently housed under the gymnasium. Senior Center, Ken Hill Center will be transferred under the building maintenance umbrella. This action will centralize the supervision and maintenance of responsibilities for each of these facilities to one management structure, and this will enable us to be more efficient in the allocation of resources and support across facilities. A similar transfer of administrative associates in recreation, parks, housing, and code enforcement and animal control will be allocated to community services. It is proposed to reclassify the executive associates in community services to a contract specialist, which takes them from a Y-111 to a Y-113 at no additional cost. And that is a rightsizing, if I can put it that way, and adjusting organization to what's being done by that particular position. In code enforcement, it is proposed to convert part-time .8 FTE, code compliance officer to a full-time FTE, code compliance officer at an additional cost of $7,073. The additional time for this position will provide the city additional support for rental housing inspection services, which has been an increasing workload for the city, as you all know. The budget is presented with a request to reclassify the part-time theater technician from a Y-106 to a Y-108 at no additional cost, and to reclassify the part-time theater technician director position to a Y, from Y-111 to a Y-112 at the cost of $1,513. For historical properties, there is a request to add one-tenth of an FTE to the part-time museum aid hours at a cost of $3,869 in cost to support the staffing need. Our IT department, which currently has 13 people, I believe, at this point, requests to reclassify GIS specialist position from Y-109 to Y-111 at no additional cost. This change will better align the grade of the position and responsibilities it has and the ability to attract candidates in the future. The planning position requests to reclassify administrative assistant position from Y-110 to Y-111 at no additional cost. This is also where it's a better line the grade of the position with the responsibilities that the position has. Finance position. One new position and reclassification are requested in order to support the city's finance activities. A new accountant technician of Y-108 is requested and would be split with the water and sewer fund also. The general fund and water sewer fund would each be charged $26,267 for the new position. A request to reclassify the utility billing specialist from position Y-111 to Y-112 at no additional cost, and a lead accountant's position from Y-117 to Y-118 at a cost of $923. This change will better align the grade of the position with the responsibilities it holds. Finally, the utility positions. In addition to half of the positions shared with finance and positions, positions in the water and sewer division would be reorganized. A water plant operator would be changed to a maintenance manager position split between the water and sewer divisions. This position would change from a Y-109 to Y-114. A utility supervisor position would be transferred from wastewater to water at .5 FTE of the utility services would be transferred from wastewater to water. Only one, also, one FTE of utility service worker would become a wastewater plant maintenance worker. All these changes positioned would be added at a cost of $3,151. I'm gonna pass forward on the capital improvement program because we're gonna talk about that in detail in a moment. But some of the things that we highlighted in the letter were the golf course, Chesapeake Bay, TMDL, Bowie Heritage Trail, Allen Pine Park, Public Works Maintenance Facility, Williams Plains House, and more. I'd like to talk, wrap up, talk a little bit about the future general fund, oh, general fund, Alan Page, Roman Numals, excuse me, 12. The city of Bowie is prosperous and a stable community. The strong and growing property tax base has enabled the city to offer consistently great services to its residents. Its successful residents have high median income, household incomes, which further the city's ability to provide services through strong income taxes. As Bowie has grown in population, it has enhanced its services through the construction of the gymnasium, the senior center, expanding into a new city hall, added police force without adding additional taxes, despite the projected need for this expensive additional service. State of Maryland mandated costed responsibilities to local government to improve quality of stormwater in Bowie. These costs have been absorbed by the city of Bowie without any change, without any change to the property rate. The city of Bowie's general fund balance is declining. The general fund is projected to be $39,229,000 on June 30, 2020. This fund balance enables the city to make up the remaining shortages in revenues over expenditures. The proposed budget uses $10,708,200 in their appropriate fund balance to level the budget. After lowering to $28,590,000 in FY 2021, it is projected to decrease to $18,829,000 for fiscal year 2022. And below is the forecast of the annual general fund transfer, and that's the chart that's on page 13. The water and sewer fund, and I'll talk about that briefly, represents a total budget of $11,795,200. Rates of the water and sewer fund for FY 21 are proposed to be combined rate of $13.18, $13.18 per thousand gallons. This represents an increase of five percent over the rate for FY 2020. The rate equates to an average household using 13,000 gallons per quarter and having a quarterly bill of $171.34. In FY 22, the projected rate increase is five percent. These rate increases are necessary because the city's water sewer system is a constrained system where growth is limited. Consumption has historically been dropping due to more efficient fixtures and appliances, and the infrastructure is aging. Additional rate increases are projected in the future. I'd like to go to the last page of the letter and chat, talk about, come to the middle of the page here. At the December 6, 2016 council meeting, which happened to be the meeting I was sworn in, the staff presented a recapitalization plan for the city's water distribution center. Staff proposed that in order to sufficiently capitalize improvements to the water distribution system, estimated at $14,396,731 over a 12-year period, a large, a special charge of $22.75 per quarter be levied on the customers of this fund in FY 2018. Of course, there are other projects associated with the water fund aside from that tuberculation situation that exists that I was presented with on that particular day. The fifth year, we're in the fifth year of a meter replacement program, and we're gonna spend $275,000 in this particular year. $3,400,000 is included for the construction of two-mile of pipe replacement that we mentioned associated with this tuberculation. In FY 2021, $65,000 included for wastewater, SCADA implementation, $200,000 for pump replacement at pump station number eight, and $80,000 for the sewer lateral replacement. And of course, we have water tank painting for the media lane tank proposed in FY 21 for $740,000. The improvements outlined here in the water sewer fund are consistent with the goals of the strategic plan presented by the council, particularly the invest in public infrastructure to ensure reliability, long-term sustainability, and compliance with the state and federal requirements. We come to the conclusion of my letter to you all, and I'd like to thank Mr. Our CPA and finance director, H. Byron Matthews, Lola and his finance staff, and department directors and assistant directors for the effort in preparing this budget so that I could present it to you for your review, adjustment, and hopefully an approval of the document you all feel good with. The mission of the city is to provide great services to the residents, and we believe this document can help us continue to do that. The budget was prepared without the anticipated increase in a real estate property tax. A proposed increase of .03 is anticipated for FY 22 budget, and staff looks forward to assisting the city council in this review of the process. I'd like to take a moment now, and I'd like to take a moment now and let Mr. Matthews go through the revenues for you.
Thank you, Al. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and residents. My name is H. Byron Matthews. I'm the finance director for the city of Bowie.
There was a, the reason why the numbers were a little different than what was initially put out is because we submitted in additional pages technical amendments which involved the Ice Plex, which changed the numbers, just to make sure that everybody understands that. Thank you. Proceed. Sorry.
I wanted to make a brief comment before I started in with the revenue detail. This is uncharted water for the city of Bowie as it relates to the pandemic. Our budget was near completion when the governor issued his executive order on March 5, 2020. The city is financially strong, and in times when the economy suffers, the economic and financial impact to our city government tends to lag the financial impacts realized at the county and state level. The city finance, financial exposure is centered around income tax, fuel tax, property tax, emissions, and amusement taxes, and other charges for services. Based on the limited information, the city could lose revenue in the amount of $800,000 for the remainder of the fiscal year, which ends June 30 of 2020. The losses are mostly attributed to the potential loss in emissions and amusement taxes and interest income on investments. The other major impacts are salaries and wages incurred during the pandemic. The ramping up of services to provide around-the-clock response to citizens' need comes at a heavy price. price. Even with the possibility of receiving federal funds, the city will not recoup all of its expenditures surrounding the response to the pandemic. In the next two months, as data surrounding COVID-19 begins to surface, staff will assess the financial impact and communicate the findings to council. Councilman, Mayor, if you would, join me on page 33. I will go over the revenue detail for the general fund. The first section deals with the real and personal property taxes. Um, as you can see, our real, the total there will be $32 million for the real and personal property taxes. The next section talks about the assessed value. We started in FY 20 with $7,100 million, and in the proposed budget for this year will be at $7,600 million. On page 34, we talk about the special taxing districts, and this is basically-
There are a couple of questions. Uh, on the item that I asked you about, my understanding was we were anticipating a 5% increase to the 7% valuation. It was something like we don't have that completely accounted for. Is there, is there a reason why we're a little bit less?
Um, I think the math between FY 20 and FY 21 will get you the 5.7.
Thank you. I was looking at the estimate.
Yeah.
All right. And then up in the upper section, the gateway stormwater, is there anything in particular happening, or we're seeing a change from 4 down to 18?
Councilman, the gateway stormwater management pond, at this point is fully funded, so we don't need to charge any additional fees for that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. So as we go down the special taxing districts, and basically, this is how we collect revenue to maintain the various ponds in the city. Uh, as you can see, we have several that we must maintain. Page 35. This is dealing with the assessment for real pers- for personal property tax. As you can see in the beginning, we're talking about incorporated, unincorporated in public utilities at $209 million of assessed value at $1, so it would generate $2.1 million for the year. Hotel motel taxes, $435,500. Licensing and permits, those, that area would be $521,600. On page 36, we get into the federal grants. The community development grant is the HUD grant that we receive. The federal grant projects are grants that we receive from the federal government to assist the armored, the body armor for sworn officers. The state grants that we receive is for youth services. It's $95,100 to offset the costs at the Youth Service Bureau. State share revenues. This includes a major block of our revenues and represents over 27% of the income that comes from governmental revenue sources. Uh, income tax, emission and amusement tax, motor vehicle tax, police protection, and financial corporation tax. The next section on the same page, down at the bottom, is grants for other local units. Uh, we receive money for the county, basically for the high school resource officer, and another, and an additional $50,000 to support youth services. The next category is our landfill rebate and our parking planning offset for the maintenance of Allen Pond.
A quick one on that issue with the Allen Pond cost. The $101,000, we had spoken about, I think maybe it was the last budget year, about seeing if the county would be amenable to an increase in that amount, given the relatively small contribution that represents as part of overall costs for that facility. Did we get anywhere with that?
I think Ms. Hines is still negotiating that.
Yes. Yeah, a letter was sent to county councilman on that one. I don't have a response back.
Okay. Thank you.
Page 38, charges for services. I won't go down those independently. If you have a question, I'll, I'll respond to it. The next major sources, fees and fines, cable TV franchise fee, $1.9 million, and the other major is a speed camera, traffic infractions, $620,000. The other revenue source-
Good question on the cable TV franchise fees. Where do we stand with negotiations, and we think that will affect the overall revenue we anticipate getting from the cable TV?
At this point, councilman, we have not considered any change in the overall calculation of the potential revenue at this point. I think there is a staff member that's handling that. Matty?
Mr. Wolfley, the, the negotiations are still ongoing, and we are a part of a consortium in, in Pennsylottis County negotiating with Comcast. Currently, we are operating on, with the, the points of the, on the last agreement, and so the, the negotiations have bogged down for some reason. And what we're concerned about, of course, is the, the latest FCC rules that would affect, give the cable organizations to, to charge us in kind for, for items. For example, the Comcast store, operation over in, in Kenhill, and deduct that from our fees. We're fighting that along with the consortium, but the negotiations are still ongoing, and they've been lagging for about three years now.
Thank you.
The next section is other revenues. A major portion of that is our interest income, which I alluded to earlier. Claims and reimbursements is $200,000, and miscellaneous revenue is $174,000. $151,000-
I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you again. I'm seeing fluctuation on our Bowie Commons, um, the revenue for that. I thought we had a fixed fee for that that was being dedicated to, I think maybe capital improvements or something like that. Why is it, why is it down for this year?
Well, there was a renegotiated contract. I think there was some, a period in time where the escalation was not being recognized, and we've corrected that in the estimated number for FY 20. So the new rate will be $18,600. It had been $13,500 for the longest time, but it has been renegotiated. They had to catch up all of the back rent, and that's what we're seeing in the estimate for FY 20.
Gotcha. All right. So that accounts for 30, for a good portion of the 37?
That's correct.
Yet in 2018 and 19, we were at 33. Was that more of the same catch-up?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Page 40. Uh, the appropriated fund balance that we will be using is $10,708,900. The support received from the water and sewer fund represents the revenue here. That's $515,600, so payback to the general fund from the water and sewer fund. So our total revenue budget will equal $67,653, $67,653,000 even. The next page on 41, city rentals and user fees. This section, council, each budget section, staff goes through each rental line item to determine whether or not that cost is sufficient for the upcoming budget year. We've had several changes along the way in that category. I won't delineate that for you, but I will provide you a electronic sheet that will show you the increases for FY 21. We have several, to the Bowie Playhouse, to the gymnasium, special events. There will be increases to the boat rental fees, ball, fill, permit fees. In addition to that, there are increases to the city park permit fees. Special events, again, the amphitheater, the alcohol permit. There are additional fee increases for the Bowie Ice Arena as well, but we'll provide you a complete sheet on the rate increases that are listed in the FY 21 budget book.
Thank you. I want to ask you a couple of questions.
Okay.
Uh, back on page 42, we had the Bowie Senior Center, and we have non-resident fees. I've hea- I've heard from time to time complaint from citizens who are concerned that there are too many people at the senior center, specifically concerns that there are non-residents who are, from time to time, crowding the facility, using, for example, the, the pool table or, or other amenities there. I see we have $125 per year fee for non-residents. Has there been any consideration to raising that further to discourage non-resident participation?
We didn't consider for this year's budget. I will refer to Ms. Hines.
So, so that, I don't think the fitness room is one of the rooms now that is overcrowded. It was at one time, so we did institute that fee, and that has balanced out. I, I don't think we're finding that most of our other rooms are overcrowded. We are finding sometimes that our seniors want an immediate use of a pool table, for example, and then they have to wait until a game is finished. But, so, we can't, can't charge a fee to attend the center, apparently, because we would lose the Sage program, which is our community college, 100 classrooms every semester. So although there are times when the senior center has a lot of people, in, in general, I'm not seeing that.
Mr. Wolfley, we'll, we'll take a look at this, at that situation and see if there is some more overcrowding. I assume you want to consider raising that fee?
Matt, and I wanted to take a look and ensure that we're not in a position where we have an amenity that is used extensively enough by non-residents that it limits the availability or access to the services of residents. And my concern is, I don't want to sit in a position where someone says I need to go expand the senior center, or want a, you know, available time, want the equipment, or whatever it might be. And I, and I hear it from time to time from constituents, and that's the concern I have. So if you guys can take a look at that, that would be great, to see if there's anything that might warrant a change in fees. That hadn't been said, and fortunately, Sally, I think some of your message was a little garbled, so I couldn't quite grasp everything you were conveying. But I think, I understand that, that we have some programs that we take advantage of that preclude us from charging for the access to the facility itself. Is that right?
Yes.
All right. We'll see if there's anything you can do, if you would, on, on that, just to, there may be other things out there that can be done. I'm not sure what they would be, but I, it does make me a little concerned. Thank you. And then on to, same situation, I know we had a, a change at the city gym in terms of, of membership and how, and how that's offered for non-residents. Sally, can you speak to that and where we are and the results of, of that change in policy, and do we need to continue making changes, or do we have, have we satisfactorily reduced demand with our past efforts?
So I, I think we have reduced the demand. Our open gym times are less crowded. We do not sell memberships to non-city residents any longer at the gym. Created a little bit of angst at the beginning, but everyone seems to have accepted that and, and moved on. So I think it's had a desired effect.
Excellent. Thank you.
Hey, I have a question. This is Ingrid. Do you keep the data for the numbers of the residents versus non-residents who use those
So, Ingrid, councilman, councilwoman, it depends, yes, probably we can provide you with data. It depends on what exactly you're asking for. For example, at the senior center, we could tell you how many members we have and how many are residents and how many are not, if that's what you're looking for. At the gymnasium, it is primarily resident use, except for your user groups who are renting time, and then it's preferential to resident groups, although, as we determined a year or two ago, even most of our larger user groups are not over 60% residents. They're more in the 50%, and some are even less, but, but there are always a significant number of kids on a team or in a league that are Bowie residents.
I guess I was just wondering what the, you know, there was a profit that we were making from the non-residents, or what that amount may, may be.
At the gymnasium, I don't think we're making a profit from any of our user groups. Certainly, our residents, our non-resident groups pay a higher fee. They are limited more to the off-seasons. So during prime time, you're pretty much your Bowie Boys and Girls Club, your South Bowie Boys and Girls Club, your CYO. In the off-season, the summertime, for example, which is not prime time for basketball, you get the AAU groups, which are a lesser percentage of residents, and they do pay a higher fee to play.
Ms. Mayor, I'd like to move, move us over to the capital improvement program. Ms. Mayor, I'd like to move, move us over to the Capitol Improvement Program. And that would take us to page one ninety in our budget book. A description of the Capitol Improvement Program would be that the Capitol Improvement Program, which is labeled CIP, is a six-year plan which the Council adopts in the form of resolution to authorize improvement or acquisition projects. The projects listed on the Capitol Improvement Program are discussed at one of the first budget sessions, which is what we're doing now, and, and adjusted and eventually approved by the City Council. There are some planning processes that are integrated into the development of our CIP. That would include the Recreation Master Plan, Allen Pond Park Master Plan, the White Marsh Park Master Plan, Transportation Environmental Impacts, and such as the Hiker Biker Trail in the Bowie, that Bowie System of Movement, and the Water and Sewer System Long-Term Needs. If we could move forward, Mr. Mayor, I, what I wanted to start with here is, is to go to our first project, which would be land, land acquisition. And as we move through it, I will go through the particular project, highlight it, and await questions and, and such. So starting with the land acquisition on page one ninety-five. Funding has been identified for the acquisition of open space areas in and around the city of Bowie. The amount available for fiscal year 2021 appropriations is provided, provided by the prior year transfer from the general fund of twenty-five thousand, two hundred, current year transfer to the general fund is thirteen-five, and the state program open space grants total seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. So, the program open space funds can be used for up to one hundred percent of property acquisition costs. Normally, a maximum of fifty percent of the city's POS allocation can be used as a seventy-five percent match for parks and development costs. So currently, we have seven hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars in the balance that's available to us. You go to page one ninety-six, you'll see a breakdown, project summary costs. You'll see that we had a balance of seven thirty-seven. If you look down at the second chart, six hundred, and with an additional thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred to the, from the general fund, which gives us a total of seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred dollars. That thirteen-five is the money that we get from the Bowie Commons as, as rental farm. Any questions about land acquisition, comments, or direction?
Any questions in the council?
Alright. Hearing none, I'll move to our, our next CIP project on page one ninety-seven, which is the Senior Center, which we just got through talking about. This, this page describes, provides for various equipment systems, facilities upgrades. The FY '21, '21 budget includes funding for remaining, replacement of cabinets, counters, various classrooms, as well as the HVAC project closeout expenditures. Total of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars is in this project. If you go to page one ninety-eight, you'll see that for FY '21, we, we intend to replace the cabinet and counters in the art room, billiards room, ceramics room, and that'll be eighty thousand dollars. And we will conduct a, an HVAC project closeout of three hundred thousand dollars. And, and it also reflected, if you look down at the project summary, funding summary, you'll see the three hundred and eighty thousand dollars listed there. Are there any questions about that? That project's being managed by Public Works, and, if anybody, if anybody has any. Is that yours?
Actually, Community Services has taken that over.
Well, excuse me. That, that's been taken over by Community Services. But any questions about the Senior Center, CIP, three hundred and eighty thousand dollar project for this year? Hearing none? Yes, please. If there are no questions, then, if you look at page one ninety-nine, that's the Ken Hill Center. We're not projecting any money, funding for that during FY '2021. We are completing, just for a matter of fact, a design and engineering of the HVAC controls and the units, replacement options for A3B, C, C3, D, E, J, P, R, S, V, W, X, Y, for a total of fifteen thousand dollars. That's not the alphabet. That would, those are the numbers of our HVAC systems. And of course, the, and we did some paving in the, in the, in the parking lot for, for a total of forty-five thousand dollars in 2020. Nothing for 2021. On the next page, in, in page two oh one, is the Harmel House, which, as you all know, is the, the city continues to maintain the facility, which is the home of the National Capitol Radio and Television Program Museum, excuse me. The museum opened in nineteen ninety-nine and hosts eighteen hundred visitors annually. In 2021, the HVAC unit in the garage will be replaced, and a new HVAC controls will be installed to manage all HVAC systems on the site. And if you don't know, this properties list is on Mitchellville Road at Mount Oak, I believe. And thirteen thousand dollars is set aside for that. If you go to page two oh two, you'll see that in our project cost summary, we've set aside thirteen thousand dollars to a garage HVAC and control replacement. That's also reflected in our summary, project funding summary below. Any questions about the Harmel House? If there are none, I'd like to move to page-
Sorry, Mr. Commissioner, Paul-
Please, go ahead.
What are we doing with this Harmel House? I don't really understand it.
I'm sorry? I didn't, I didn't hear you say that.
Talk to me more about this house, maybe Sally, and your department. Can you describe what's going on with this house and why we have it?
It's a museum. It's one of our museum, components in our museum systems, but Sally can speak in more detail.
Yeah, it's a, you know, it was a historic property. It was renovated, and I'm sorry, I can't give you the year that it was renovated, but, and it, the Radio History Museum was looking for a home, and it's rented out to them. I can get you the, the rental cost on that if you want. I don't have that on the top here. So it's, it's open on weekends. If, if you've never been down there, I would encourage you all to go down. They're expanding that into the garage area with, it was pretty much used for storage, and they're going to try to do some classes and other things in that building as well.
But they are paying rent, the guys are using it now?
They do. They pay, and I, I believe they pay utilities, and I, I can get that information to you.
Please do. Yeah. I just want, I was curious. Thank you.
I'll put a plug in for them. They have a great collection of radio and television memorabilia, and a heck of a lot of people that know a lot more than I could ever possibly ever grasp. It's truly amazing. And they have guys that can go back and fix radio tubes and things like that, radio tube based radios, and a really neat setup.
If no other questions about the Harmel House, I'll go to the City Hall. As you all know, our facility here is sixty-six thousand square feet, and, and, and we built it a while ago, but it's got the City Manager's Office, Police Information, Technology, Finance, Community Services, and planning departments, and it provides the Mayor's Office, City Council Chambers, and several public meetings. We're planning to spend fifty thousand dollars on the City Hall this year, and we will be doing the following. We'll be looking at the roof condition assessment for twelve thousand dollars, living roof condition assessment for eight thousand dollars, exterior masonry and condition assessment for five thousand dollars. And we intend to install a, a charging station as we get more electric vehicles, and, and here at City Hall for twenty-five, half of that twenty-five thousand dollars is for the, it's the installation of the, of the conduit to, to, to run to that particular charging station. And you, as you see here, in both the summary and the, and the cost, we're, we're prepared to, we're spending fifty thousand dollars on City Hall. Any questions about that CIP project?
Yeah. Mr.? Good question for you on the charging station. Is that, is that going to be a high-speed charging station?
It's, no, it is not a high-speed charging station. It's, it, we have a, which is, I think it's a level two.
Right. Is there any, do you know what the cost differential might be on a high-speed?
I have to get that to you. I think it's, it's like, we can certainly get that information. Since the car is, I don't think it's necessary for what our use is going to be. We could, compliance officers tried earlier, but it isn't this. So it is not expected that there will need a fast charge, that it's, you know, charge. So they're going to need to charge it twice a week, something like that. And it'll be overnight.
We'll get to the difference then.
I'm sorry, due fore partially preempted me with that. How many, Sally, I think you touched on this. This would just be for our code enforcement fleet. How many charging stations are we talking about, and how many vehicles do we expect to be able to charge with these?
Well, eventually, we are committed to changing our entire code fleet over to electric vehicles, which would be, I believe, six or seven, maybe seven vehicles. And we currently have the capacity to charge two.
Okay.
This would give us the capacity to charge two more.
Okay. But just so I understand broadly speaking, this particular charging station, how many, we're, we're just building one additional charging station? I'm not super familiar with how these things work.
Charging station generally has two heads. So I think this may be a two-headed charging station, similar to what we have now.
Okay. Gotcha, gotcha.
Well, no other questions about our, go ahead?
I'd like to follow up on that comment. That kind of takes me back, if we're going to be at the point where we need six or seven, that it might be cheaper in the long run to put in a high, one single height that kind of future proves the, the need, and might be able to handle more of those vehicles than having to go back and set up another couple down the road.
So we can look into that for you, sure.
Thank you.
Alright, then. We'll move, on page two oh five, we have the Gymnasium. We are not projecting to spend anything on, on this project this year. And 2020, we, we're closing out the HVAC controls and, and engineering design. We spent twenty-three thousand dollars on it. We put up court dividers, a curtain replacement, that was forty-eight thousand dollars. So, but we are not spending on that, on the gym this year. The same with the Welcome Center. We, it is not a part of the CIP project for this year. The Genealogy Library is, we are projecting to spend nothing on that this year. So that takes us to page two eleven, which is the Williams Plains Property. I, I'd like to say here that the picture that's on, in the book, has to be really old, because it just doesn't look that good anymore. And I'm just, I'm just saying, so that I don't want to mislead anybody or, and, or guilty of subterfuge, but this, it doesn't look this good. As a matter of fact, we, during the course of this past year, we, we discovered that this building, which is a historic property also, had significant structural failings, so much so that we had to ask the, Lessee, who was the Sport Fit Organization, we had to ask them to move people out of the building, because even though it was leased to them, it was our liability. And so if you look at page two twelve here, you'll see that we have a set aside seventy-five thousand dollars for demolition. We have fenced the property off to keep people away from it. We are currently seeking a, a tenant who would be willing to renovate the property. If that's not possible, we are also investigating through, through the historic properties channels, what it would take to demolish the property. So any questions on that?
Yeah, it's a couple of quick ones. The first is, do we have an estimate of what the cost to repair the, these damage, or is there any shortcomings?
So our nineteen, we had, we had a study done in twenty thirteen, and it was about almost a million dollars then. So, yeah, we're seven hundred and fifty, eight, eight hundred thousand dollars then, and I expected significantly more now. And that was not to restore the property, that was to fix the deficiencies within it.
That was-
We're going to start working, our historic properties manager, Susan Proctor, is looking to see if there is a, a university program, a historic architect out there, someone who would like to perhaps restore it and, you know, sell it, give it, something along those lines, and rent it for a dollar in exchange for doing the renovation work. So we're exploring that possibility. It's not our first choice to demolish it, but it would be a significant expense for something that, that we feel that we have a significant number of historic properties already in the city that we're maintaining. Whether the Council would want to take on the responsibility for another one would, would be your, your decision at some point.
Are there any limitations on destroying that? That is to say, there aren't any requirements on it for, in the aspect of historic property standpoint?
So, you know, we would have to apply with the Historic Trust and get permission to do it. Until we do that, we don't know. We, we believe that we can do it, yes, but that would remain to be seen over, over time.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, just for clarification, I heard you say two things. A, we're looking for somebody who would want to take the property and demolition. It's, my assumption is, is that you want somebody to take the property first, get the demolition, right?
Right. We, we were looking for somebody to, a renter, or somebody willing to take over the property, make it structurally sound, and use it in a historic fashion. However, if, if that, if all else fails, we would, and we would, we intend to, plan to demolish it if the historical authorities will allow it. And, but that's, that's our plan.
But then it will be out by twenty twenty-two, right?
And, well, the demolition could occur sometime in next fiscal, next fiscal year, and/or in 2022, we could bring the money forward, or we could push it out one year.
Okay, thanks.
Alrighty.
I'd like to ask the Historical Site, City Manager, I didn't see anything for Bel Air Mansion. And I was curious about that, because we know that Bel Air Mansion is not accessible. And I know we're trying to make some changes there, and I didn't see anything listed directly addressing Bel Air Mansion. Could you address that, please?
Well, we're, we're going to have some, we're going to address that later on, and there's a CIP page, if you look further back, that discusses accessibility, and specifically addresses the Bel Air Mansion.
Okay.
And we're going to, we're all, we're going to get to it in, in a few minutes.
Okay.
Alright, then. If there are no other questions about the Williams Plains Property, I'd like to talk a little bit about the CIP project, which is referred to as Energy Efficiency Improvements, page two thirteen. The amount involved here is forty thousand dollars. This project provides for the development and implementation of the energy efficiency improvements on city facilities and/or lands. This is a study, a study completed evaluating the feasibility of installing renewable energy technologies in our own cities. And so this is one of our efforts to meet that standard. If you go to page two fourteen, you'll see on FY '2021, we intend to install all the parking lot light, lighting upgrade at Black Sox Park, Jericho, and Church Road Parks to the tune of forty thousand dollars. Any questions about that? If there are none, I'd like to move to the, this is a new page here, like the accessibility page we're going to get to later, next, which is physical security, facility security. The city of Bowie is committed to the safety and security of citizens visiting and visiting staff working in it in all city facilities. Steps have been taken to identify safety and security risks and determine appropriate solutions for, to address the gaps. This project will- This project will address prioritized solutions and provide security in the form of new physical security hardware, uh, security technology, video surveillance, monitoring and visitor management systems. Um, the number is $155,000 for FY 2021. Last year, uh, when there was, before the coronavirus took over everybody's thoughts and minds, there were, we were, people were significantly concerned about active shooter and mass casualty situations and/or terrorist threats that were happening to other local governments. And, uh, many members of the council spoke to me and or talked to me about it. Therefore, we hired a security consultant to take a look at the City of Bowie's facilities and we have some recommendations. As you can see in 2020, we, we have, well, this fiscal year, we're going to pay out approximately $35,000 to our consultant. And what we did was we came up with a phased operation. So phase one, we planned to, if you look at phase 216, we plan to, um, acquire and employ more, uh, closed circuit television, uh, systems. We, we would like to set up a visitor management system, like the automated systems where if you go to the cog right now and you would, um, put your passport or your ID card, uh, to the, to the management of the entrance, they take a photo of you and issue you a, a visitor's badge. And you can do that without a person being there. I went to the, um, US Open, um, about a year or so ago and there was one person, I gave her my ID card. She made sure I wasn't a bad person and printed everything out and I got a badge and I was able to go in and watch my niece play. It's, uh, so weird. We want something that's, that can, that doesn't need a person, that's automated, that can help us control the access to the city so that our resident, our people who are here, our employees are, can be safe. And we intend to, uh, uh, do that for $155,000 in, in 2021. And as you see in 2022, there's a second phase, which is where we get physical hardware, secure, uh, security hardware, more CCTV and continue to upgrade our systems and alarms and make us, make it safer for residents and employees here in City Hall and other city facilities. Any questions?
Hey, Mr. City Manager.
Hi there. How are you today, ma'am?
Hi, hi, this is Bosie. Um, I just wanted to say, I don't necessarily have a question, but I wanted to say like I kind of, I would love to applaud you on this section because this is really, um, something that's really needed and a lot of us really wanted to see this and I was waiting this, so I'm really happy that this is there. Then I think just want, publicly, it kind of goes to that direction of municipality moving towards scarcity and like that innovation that's really going to keep the community safe. I really applaud you and I think we're adding that and doing some research on that.
Well, thank you, ma'am. I'll, I'll give Lee Cornwell a whole lot of credit for that one as our, uh, emergency manager and he's been a guy managing for us. And we, we intend to get better every year with this physical security. Any other questions about this?
Mr. City Manager, yes, a quick question. We have a dollar, $155,000, $65,000. Are we looking at, is being driven by what we apply or where we apply it? That is to say, is the $155,000 for City Hall and the rest for the remaining buildings? Or is this a progressive rollout where the infrastructure is just costing more in the out years?
Well, if you look, if you see where we're spending on the same thing in phases, in both phases, we're going to start with City Hall and move out to the, the Ken Hill Center, the Gymnasium and the Senior Center as we, uh, work things out and get more money.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I'm very much looking forward to seeing this and it's been, uh, something that a number of constituents have raised and certainly a lot of us council members have raised as well. So thank you again.
Sure.
I just want to jump in on one thing real quick. I just want to make sure that, you know, the approach that we're taking doesn't create for visitors who are coming to City Hall, um, a feeling of walking into a fortress, you know, or visiting a prison or, you know, just, I just want to make sure that while we implement, you know, measures that make people actually safer, that we also think about what it looks like if people are just coming into the building. Because I don't want us to do things that might inadvertently advertise to people that like, you're in an unsafe space, right? You know what I mean?
Well, I understand your concern. That's the balance we have to deal with here. I mean, every time a shooter or somebody who we did not, somebody didn't know, did something at a city or a local government, uh, there, the tension coming from your peers was significant. And as we, I look around, if you go to the county government, you have to go through a metal detector to get in the county government. Uh, if, I'm not saying we're, we're looking at that particular level of, uh, security, even though we may get to that point at some point, sometime. Right now, I think we want to start with something like, if you go to council of governments, you know, we want, we want to know who you are when you come in our building. That's all. And that's, I think in today's world, it's a reasonable request to ask somebody to present identification so that we can scan them in and send them to the right office. And of course, we do have, we do allow people presently to walk around and look at the artwork. We just want to know who people are and we are hoping that the residents will be, will understand that and be cooperative. And we plan to still be polite and nice, but we, we want to be, we want things to be more secure for everybody who's here. And we're not going to make, we don't intend to make it draconian or like Atmore State Prison in Alabama, but, um, we do want to know who's coming in the building.
Yeah, that customer service approach and that politeness is going to be really essential if we start asking for IDs.
Sure.
Because I think that really just changes the culture a lot when it comes to relationship between people and the government. So I would just ask that that's something that we really keep in mind and just make it a special effort to have that kind of polite customer service approach to the residents if we're going to adopt this new posture when it comes to facility security.
Yes, sir. We sure will.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, uh, the next, uh, CIP project is accessibility improvements. Uh, the description reads, this is a new CIP project. This project involves physical enhancement of city facilities and properties to provide improved assets for individuals with disabilities who may have mobility challenges. If you, um, look at, uh, page 218, you'll see that in 2021, we plan to, um, add a door opener to the city council chamber, which is a $30,000 expense. We've also done some things that were unplanned from my contingency account, uh, here already within the city. We've, uh, put door openers on the hall with, on the double heavy doors that go to the mayor's office. We're also, um, we have modified the boathouse restaurant, restrooms at Allen Park to accommodate wheelchairs. And as you can see, we're looking toward next year, they're spending possibly a $250,000 for the modification of Bel Air Mansion, if you all approve that CIP. Any, uh, prepared to take questions? If there aren't any, uh, we'll proceed.
I have a quick question or two. On the, on the door openers, the $32,000 doesn't represent just one door opener, it represents, uh,
Yes, City Manager's suite too. Yeah, it's, it's actually the council chambers and the city manager's suite also.
It just seems, uh, awfully expensive for a door opener. I know it's a retro, uh, retro thing, but nonetheless. And then can you explain how we would modify the mansion such that we would have improved accessibility? What is the vision there for that, for that project?
Well, we've made some preliminary assessments. We're not sure that this amount of money is enough, nor if, if we can actually modify that, that building to accommodate the width of a wheelchair without structurally changing the building. So we're also, um, we're planning, we're hoping that we get, we have the authority to do so, but we're also looking at coordinating with the historical, uh, authorities to see if we can modify the building. And because right now that the elevator is one way of getting in if you can't go through the front, but then the average wheelchair wouldn't fit there. So we have to, we have quite a, a structural challenge at that facility. And, um, and, and one part of the funding next year for that, and if we have any left open, there's 32.5. Now, the 32.5 is, was an estimate regarding, uh, and the technology is more expensive than the actual work, if you don't know my point. But we'll, we're going to be looking at and talking to engineers to see just what we can do at the Bel Air Mansion, without, you know, an exorbitant expense.
Okay, and, uh, I want to ask, uh, at the same time, can we take a look at this H at Ken Hill Center? Uh, I don't know if anybody looked at that as to whether or not that's something that can be made accessible and maybe the usage doesn't warrant it, but I thought maybe there might be some value there.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said, sir. What about the Ken Hill Center? The stage, okay.
Yeah, Ken Hill Center, the stage access.
Okay, stage access. You bet.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I would imagine that, uh, that would be a more modest thing. Certainly it's, uh, not restricted by historic preservation requirements. And in the end, it may not be worth doing, but it seems to me that that might be worth adding as well.
All right.
Thank you.
Pardon me, I'm going to add something to that as well.
Your progress.
And picking back off of Du four, where we added the Ken Hill Center, just for an assessment of this situation, if we could also add the Harmel House, uh, the Radio and Television Museum, I do know that they do not, they are not, um, accessible. So we might want to add them as well, since we're going to do these assessments. All right, thank you.
If I could chime in just for a second, um, I was going to my background information on the, on the FY 21. So that $32,000 would include the assessment of the Bel Air Mansion by an architect. I have a quote back on that one. So once he does that assessment of the Bel Air Mansion, we'll have a better feel for the following year, how much is needed. The question is, will it be a ramp? Would, would it be a second elevator? Um, and as the city manager mentioned, the other issue that potentially comes in is internal to the building and the size of the actual doorways between rooms. But that assessment, that will be done this coming fiscal year and we'll have a better idea for budget for the following year in that particular facility for you.
I feel better about the 32, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I'm glad, well, I'm happy. I'm glad you feel better, sir. That's, uh, the, well, when we get that, when we bring that architect on, we'll have, we'll, we'll add an assignment for the Harmel House and the Ken Hill Center stage. Any other questions before I go to street resurfacing? Of course, as, as you all know, in your experiences in local government, you know, it's, it's two things, two things just simply have to happen. One, we simply must pick up the trash. And the other thing we have to do, especially in today's world, we have to pave our roads. If we don't do that, then they'll be at the gates with pitchforks and torches and ready to throw us all out of office. So through that end, we put $1,850,000 aside as if we, and we, this is an amount close to what we normally spend on, on the maintenance of our city roads here in Bill Bowie. In 2021, we're going to spend, uh, we're going to do the North Ridge pavement replacement at Quintet Lane and Fletcher Stone Road and Ketsol Drive and Fletcher Stone Road. Now, for the record, that's around the corner from my house. I had nothing to do with that though. This is a normal progression. But for the record, for the record. So also George and his people do an excellent job of managing this program. And this is one of the reasons why people like living in Bowie because we do a good job of maintaining our streets, curbs and gutters. Any questions about the street surfacing project?
Yeah, Mr. City Manager, just for some clarification. Can we talk about the process for the streets to get on this list?
I think I heard you breaking up a little bit. I think I heard your question was how does the street get on the list? Well, we have, our streets division surveys the streets, uh, the city streets every year and, uh, and they check for, though my old public work director in me is coming back, they're looking for poor streets and fair streets to resurface. And, uh, and they measure them and adjust them, rate them, poor, fair and good. And those streets that are fair and poor are on the list. And if you have, you are a constituent, has a street that you think should be on the list, we, uh, we'd be happy to take a look at it and give it an evaluation.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Very good.
Al, um, kind of a follow on that. Can you give me the list of this year's streets that are being paved or have been paved in this fiscal year and then what we're looking at for next fiscal year?
Sure.
I always get, uh, I always seem to get queries about, uh, some point in time where the street falls on the bed.
We'll get that to all of you, sir, and that's for sure. Uh, any other questions about street surfacing?
Yes, Mr. City Manager, um, so in addition to that information that Councilmember please refer to, could you also have someone send us the exact criteria? Like the delineated criteria for how they're making decisions? Because I'd be curious about that. We have had a number of residents express to us that they think that some streets are getting repaved that probably didn't need it. Whereas other streets are not addressed as quickly. And so I just kind of am curious about that information, about what exactly the criteria is and how those decisions are made.
We can do that, no problem, sir.
Good to hear.
That was actually my, that was actually my question because I've been getting a lot of comments regarding Mitchellville.
Yeah. Uh, Mitchellville Road is a county road and we can, am I, that's correct, isn't it, George?
Yeah, except, except for the part north of 197. Yes, Mitchellville is maintained by Prince George County, except for the part north of 197 up to the Target, which we resurfaced just two years ago, I think.
Okay, so if they have a complaint about the, the part leading up to 301, then that would go to the county?
That's correct.
That's correct. And we'll be happy to pass on that complaint to them, to the county forum if need be.
Thank you.
Okay then, um, this is not the most exciting sections coming up. These are the sediment and erosion control, uh, projects that we have here. And what occurs is we project it out sometimes a very long time when these, these stormwater, uh, structures will be in need of dredging. And we'll start with, um, the sediment and erosion control Maryland Science and Tech Center with Melford. It is anticipated that the upper wet pond A will need to be cleaned of sediment in, in FY 2100 at a cost of $9,518,254. The lower wet pond will need to be cleaned in 2064 at an estimate cost of 13. And what we do is we reserve money in these funds so that at that particular time, we'll have the money to, to do that. So far, uh, and this year, we're going to put $114,000 aside. And you can see how we've done that in the past and we intend to do that in the future. The same thing would be with, um, sediment erosion control structure in the Bowie Town Center. It's scheduled to be cleaned in 2015, 2115, excuse me. And when the annual additions and accumulated reserves are expected to generate sufficient funding to do the job, we plan to put $50,800 over here for that. Uh, the same with Hybridge. The, a survey, hydrographic survey was completed in 2018, found that the sedimentation was limited and the cleaning would be deferred to 2068. Uh, hopefully we'll still have our jobs by then. The, uh, the survey will, did find a need for future removal of the spatter rock, spatter dot growth, which is, will otherwise dot growth, which is, will otherwise reduce the pond volume. And, uh, we've set no money away from there because I believe we have the sufficient funds that we net, we need in that particular fund. Um, we're going to spend $30,000, set aside $30,000 for the Gateway Center and it's scheduled to be dredged in 2026. Um, we're going to set aside $26,200 for the covenant sediment control, scheduled to be dredged in, um, in 2102 for $4,782,200. And, and that ends those, um, particular instances. Those are, we also have in our general stormwater management program, the Public Stormwater Management Capital Improvement Program provides funding for corrective actions needed to maintain the city's stormwater infrastructure. For those who are out in, in, in watching on television, this is a, how we manage the rainwater that falls off your roofs, on your properties and can cause flooding and other erosion damage projects, uh, erosion damage to, uh, structures. The infrastructure includes storm sewers, storm drainage inlets, stormwater outfalls, public stormwater ponds and other facilities, streams and channels. The Department of Public Works routinely inspects approximately 71 public stormwater management facilities in January of each year. There are 18 stormwater management ponds of significant size, five and 30 years old, which will require dredging at some point. Sounding analysis are required for each pond in order to predict when the pond will need to be dredged. We've set aside $253,000 in this budget, 2021 budget. The neighborhood draining solutions, uh, $35,000. Consultant draining survey is 19. Demuck drainage basin at Hickory, uh, lead court design, $15,000. Glen Allen Pond, two repairs and design, $15,000. Greenleaf Pond Restoration Design, $15,000. And a stormwater management consultant and design of $154,000, a total of $253,000. Um, just for the rec, just, you know, one positive here, other cities that I worked in, I worked-
A couple of quick questions if I may.
Sure.
If, if we go back to the Gateway Pond, why does this, the, uh, this so, please?
Uh, Mr. Wolfley, they are different because the stormwater ponds are basically city-owned. The special taxing districts relate to business and some, in some cases, uh, city properties.
No, agreeing. Now, the, the question I have is, I believe that this one seems to need cleaning more often. Was this the one that needed it?
It's, it's just the nature of that pond, uh, Councilmember, the nature of that pond, it, uh, it's in an area that just receives, you know, more sediment than those other ponds. It's the pond right in the Gateway Center there, right, right up against, um, US 301. So it, it actually was dredged sometime in the, uh, 2010 or 2009 era, something like that. But the, yeah, it just, it just collects a lot of sediment.
This is doing, it's dropping. All right, thank you. And, um, on the, uh, the pond, the sediment control pond for Covington, uh, how do we end up with this, uh, what's the history on this strange allocation of funding for this, ranging from 18% for Pin Oak Plaza, Elder Oaks, uh, and the general revenues for the city of 53%?
Let me talk to that. Uh, Councilperson Wolfley, um, these percentages were based off the actual estimates of the, uh, the runoff of that water into those particular ponds from those particular buildings. An engineering assessment was done.
Look, and I'll add to that. So, so the special tax districts, the city code provides a mechanism by which the city can take responsibility for a stormwater facility that would normally be, you know, take, uh, the responsibility to the commercial property owners. And, uh, and when we do that, we create the special tax district. And these ponds, because they carry drainage from both commercial properties and residential properties, there's a cost share between the special tax districts and the city's general fund. So each pond, and we'll be doing this for South Lake, for example, each pond, uh, you know, has an analysis done that says, hey, you know, half of the water's coming from the commercial district, so that special tax district needs to pay for half of that. The residential properties are covered by the city taxes. Does that explain that?
Yes, thank you. I was, uh, wondering when we've done the, how, how we'd come up with them, if that's helpful. Thank you.
Let's move on to public works facilities, uh, main facility, please, on page, uh, two, 233, my glasses on, oh, yeah. Uh, this project provides major repairs, modifications and improvements to, to the public works facility located off Route 401, including additions to buildings, fencing, landscaping, interior renovations and security work. And if you go to the, uh, cost project, cost summary, you'll see that we, um, we plan to replace underground fuel storage tanks for, to $870,000 and re-side the salt barn for $40,000. Any questions about this particular, um, project? If there are none, we'll move-
Yes, on the, uh, on the, uh, fuel storage tanks, so we got to tear out the old ones?
Go ahead, George.
And is there a reason why they're underground as opposed to anything above ground? I, I don't know too much about it, but I'd assume that if it's above ground, the liability would be less, or concerns about leakage? And I don't know about the cost.
So the, um, they're, they're underground, you know, they, they're old. So, you know, they're underground, I suspect that the original decision was to put them underground, uh, for space reasons. Um, we actually did, you know, hire consultant to look at the alternatives of above ground, underground relocation. Um, and we concluded for cost reasons to replace, uh, the tanks underground was the most cost-effective solution. We also do have a very serious space shortage there, so to move them above ground would also create some space, uh, issues. In terms of the liability, I mean, we do have a requirement for the underground tanks, um, to do biennial inspections. Um, the cost for those is not a lot of money. So, so the operating cost really is not significantly different. The construction cost, however, if we were to move them above ground, was about a $200,000 difference, even more, more expensive to put them above ground.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for checking in on that.
All right, then, we, uh, if you look at page 235, then you'll see that, um, we have nothing planned for streets and utilities building this year. Uh, facilities prevented maintenance, uh, is a, uh, we have significant investment in new buildings, uh, we're in relatively new buildings, this building, senior center, uh, the parks and grounds facilities, uh, and, uh, the gym. And so this money is set aside each year, we didn't do it last year, but that was, we have some constraints and we could, so that we can maintain. We, when this building was built, their merit, the HVAC systems are very technical and very costly. And, uh, so we need that money to, just to do our job and to keep the facilities up and running in, in a seamless manner. And as we, uh, we have set aside therefore $589,900 for facilities maintenance. Any questions on that?
Yes, do you have a list of, of, of what we tend to do with that for this? I see only on this, uh, listing the Harmel House at $13,000, but I don't see any of the other component pieces.
What we can do is, uh, is get you a, a breakdown of what we accomplished with our facilities maintenance, uh, operation and, uh, and what we reject, and we can do that for you, no problem. And Sally's taking notes on that right now, I'm sure. Uh, we have no plans for the solid waste administration facility for 2021. We do have a $250,000 set aside for the Chesapeake Bay. And for those who don't know, the, in December 29, 29, 2010, the, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency established a Chesapeake Bay Total Maximum Daily Load, otherwise TMDL. TMDL is a comprehensive pollution diet to, um, to restore clean water to the Chesapeake Bay and the region's streams, creeks and rivers. A TDML, TMDL is a calculation of the maximum amount of pollution a body of water can receive and still meet state water quality standards. The water quality standards are designed to ensure waterways meet a national primary goal of being swimmable and fishable. The Chesapeake Bay TMDL is designed to ensure that all pollution control measures necessary fully restore the bay and its tidal waters by, in place by 2025. And if you go to page 242, you'll see that, um, under, um, we're going to renovate the drainage basin at Pin Oak Parkway and Hall Road, design, that's a $50,000 expense, impervious renovation, restoration plan, um, $125,000. This involves impervious surfaces, uh, renovations and also Saddle Brook Stream Restoration Contingency for $30,000. Any questions, uh, on that particular project?
Yes, um-
George.
I have some concerns about the way we're funding this. Uh, some of these, I believe, are for ponds that have, uh, special taxing districts. Is that correct?
Yeah, in the, in the current plan, there are some in that category. That's correct.
If they have a special taxing district, why is the funding coming from the general funds and the general, general revenues, uh, to support that? It would seem to me that if they have a special taxing district, that that taxing district ought to be paying for the improvements, the maintenance, uh, whatever it takes to comply with the Chesapeake Bay requirements, uh, for that particular taxing district. I'm not sure why the city, uh, as a whole, should be covering that added expense.
Um, the requ, the requirement that's being addressed, um, for example, Gateway Pond, I think is one of the ones listed in the out year here. The Ga, Gateway Pond is not deficient on its own. Uh, the deficiency is that the city has a responsibility to address the untreated impervious area for the entire city. And so the city made, uh, economic decisions about where we could achieve that, um, you know, mo, most cost-effectively. So there really is no, um, uh, requirement to renovate a particular pond. The, the selection of a pond that's being renovated is purely just because we have to reach a number. And we're choosing the ponds, you know, based on how we can reach a number. So the special tax district really doesn't have a responsibility to that. The responsibility is in the MS4 permit, which is the city's permit.
But yet we have, but they do have a responsibility that's greater because it is, it is their impervious surface. It is their burden that they're putting on the bay. And they should be compensating, uh, for that, given that we don't have, uh, the full burden. I mean, it does, I, it, we're making improvements elsewhere, it would seem to me. These other, for example, in the, in the Levitt neighborhoods and things like that, that are clearly city responsibilities. So it would seem to me that all areas have some level of responsibility and that there should be some way of tapping into those, uh, special taxing districts to have them, you know, pay a greater burden of this.
Yeah.
There's some, we ought to, I think, ought to take a look at some of the ways we calculate what the responsibility level is.
Yeah, so I think if you went, if we went back and looked at the purpose of the special tax district, right, that, that special tax district was, was established for certain costs. And those costs did not include, let's change the pond into something that it's not today. They only included costs such as future dredging and those sorts of things. So, you know, there's nothing in the special tax district, uh, the establishment of that tax district that would cover this sort of project. This project is taking a pond that's currently of a certain type of pond and making it a different type of pond. Uh, and that different type of pond, the only reason we're doing that is so, so we can get the credits, uh, towards, you know, our responsibility in the MS4 permit, the city's responsibility in MS4 permit. So I, I don't think that, I don't think, you know, if we looked into it, we'd come up with the same conclusion. The purpose of the special tax district does not include changing the pond, um, type.
Well, I, I understand that, but we never ended up, we didn't start out with any of our ponds with that either, uh, but that was kind of foisted upon us. If you don't mind the-
Sure, absolutely. The per, the, I mean, the permit, you know, it, because of the, the timing of development, right, anything that was built, you know, before 2002, um, any development prior to 2002 is going to typically not ha, not meet the current standards. That's why we have this deficiency, you know, through not just Buoy, but the entire Chesapeake Bay drainage area. So that's, that's the, the, uh, the TMDL requirement that the EPA put out there is, hey, you, whoever has this MS4 permit, uh, you have to go retrofit your, e, either retrofit your stormwater management facilities so that you have more treated area or get rid of the untreated area, which is obviously a little bit unrealistic. So, um, you know, so the, so the burden is actually, yeah, it's absolutely, um, you know, it's a basis of the EPA rule of the TMDL. It, it, nothing else, you know, and they knowingly said, hey, you know, we know everybody has, uh, old development, urban development that does not meet today's standards, we need you to go fix at least 20% of it. So that's what the, that's what the permit requires.
Can I add? Please. Okay, I, I just want to get onto that now, outside of the realm. But does that mean as we work forward that as we look at the stormwaters and, and if we should do any additional special taxing areas, that we would be trying to accomplish to make sure that we could recoup the costs as we move forward from the EPA standards?
So any, any future development, any development from this point on, it will meet the water quality standard. So it, so, you know, when we develop something now, it does, it, it's kind of negative, uh, kind of a neutral. Um, you know, we have currently, um, we have currently, uh, 2,396,000 acres of untreated impervious area in the city. If you build new development, you're going to have more impervious area, but it's going to be treated. You follow me? So that number won't change. So we won't end up with any additional burden.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to the, the next three, the Buoy Playhouse, the Bel Air Stable Museum and Allen Pond are not funded in this particular fiscal year, CIP. The next funded project is White Marsh on page 249. Of course, White Marsh is a torn acre park that receives a year-round use for both organized and unstructured recreation activities, uh, located, um, off of, uh, the, the state highway. Uh, so if you look at FY 2021, you'll see that we have planned to spend $375,000 to maintain this particular park. Bleacher replacement to make it ADA compliant, press, uh, a box installation, that's a $250 expense. Demolish the old press box, storage buildings for the Buoy Boys and Girls Club, we're going to re, uh, uh, move them over there and replace, uh, that's $100,000. And, um, that concludes what we plan to do, uh, for White Marsh Park. Any questions? If there aren't any questions, uh, the hiker biker trails is- If there aren't any questions, the Hiker Biker Trails is next. Of course, the city completed an inventory and condition rating for the city's hiker biker trail system. A listing has been prepared for trails in need of repair. This is an ongoing program to maintain and repair and make safety modifications to the city's hiker biker trails. This year, we plan to spend $162,500 on that. And what we intend to do is improve the Northview Drive Mid Block Crossing. It's our objective there. Any questions about the Hiker Biker Trail? The next one is Pope Creek's Park. Of course, we have no money planned for that. None for Church Road Park on 255. And we have no action going on Jericho Park, which is listed on 257. We plan to spend $20,000 at the Bel Air Mansion, which is what built in 1745 and listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And it was often looked at Bowie in his earlier days. We plan to spend $20,000. We have a basement water intrusion problem. And we need to, we intend to spend $20,000 to analyze that and determine what the best contractual course of action would be in that respect. If there are no questions about Bel Air Mansion, the next one is the Bowie Golf Course. But even though we have put no money aside there, I have to talk about this one because we did have a consultant come in and tell us in 2020, which estimates, estimated what it will cost to bring the Bowie Golf Course up to standards. When I arrived here in December 2016, within a month of my arrival, members from the organization that were, that we were paying us rent to utilize the facility came to me and informed me that they could no longer pay the rent. And it was also determined that they had not been making the capital improvements on the facility the way we thought. And of course, the council, I told it to the city council. And in 19, we did a lot of things to, in 18 and 19, we put $250,000 in for upgrades, regrabs of fairways, assessment of the clubhouse, remove the stumps from, on the area, worked on the path, and many other things in 18 and 19. And of course, in 20, we got the implementation of the, of a plan. But as you can see, in 2022 and 23 and 23 and 2024, it will cost an exceptional amount of money to bring that golf course up to a standard. And all things considered, we could not afford to do it this year. Of course, you have the prerogative to change that. But I think one of the things I'd ask the city council to consider is 22 through, beyond, whether we can, this is something we want to spend a lot, millions of dollars on in the future to maintain. And that's a proposal. I'm not seeking any, any direction currently, but I'd like for you to think about it and the next, sometime during the, we have five more sessions, correct, Byron?
Yes.
Maybe we could, I could get some direction later on. The next funded CIP plan is public art. And this one, we've set aside $125,000. And the purpose of that money is to, is to correct the Bowie sign on Route 197 and/or replace it. The ground below the shrubbery, which has been there forever, of course, has, is infested with a disease called Futophora rhamorum, which is in the soil. And, and it's like the bull weevil was an enemy of cotton. This is a, this disease destroys these shrubs. And if we replace them, it's going to, they're going to die. So we set aside $125,000. And we're going to work with the residents and the council and all parties involved to see what, what else we could put there to replace this shrubbery, which is doomed because of that disease I mentioned earlier. Any questions regarding the public art? We have no funding set aside for Black Sock Park this year. We do have $411,000 set aside for the Bowie Heritage Trail. And the 2005 Bowie Facility Master Plan recommended an off-road pedestrian trail connection between Old Town Bowie and the Mark Train Station at Bowie State University. The city's Walkable Communities Program endorsed by the city council in 2006 recommended pedestrian improvements throughout Old Town Bowie. And this is an effort to continue that effort. And in this particular, we plan, in 21, we plan to build a Jericho Park Trail segment for $370,000 and complete the 10th Street Park Construction. Will be continued for $41,000. And that's what we're planning to do with regard to Heritage Trail. Any questions? There is no money set aside for the Bowie Railroad System, Museum, excuse me, nor for Glen Allen Park. The next item is on page 274. The indoor, this is a new page also, the indoor court facility. During the 2019 budget work session, council approved a feasibility study to assess the operation, options of the construction of an indoor court, basketball, volleyball, sports facility. In October 19, staff recommended to the city council that the construction of a single facility be constructed on the property adjacent to the Bowie Golf Course, which we, we are the owners of. And, and funding for the project be, would include a design and engineering services in 2021 with construction management in 2022. And the construction of the project would be in 2023. If you look here on the project cost summary, you'll see the depiction of what I just talked about. $300,000 in 2021, $520,000 in 22, and $5,200,000 in 2023. Any questions about this project? Okay, the next project is the Bowie Trails Master Plan. We do not plan to spend any money on that this year. And the last one, I'll, I'll let the, is the Bowie Iceplex. And this is the one that was inadvertently omitted from the budget last Friday. George, would you go through this, please?
Yes, sir. This is obviously not a new item, but not in the book. And I'll read the description because of that. This project will replace the existing Bowie Ice Arena with a new two-sheet arena located at the city's Church Road property near the US 50 Overpass. The need for additional indoor sports facilities in the city was examined in a 2013 feasibility study. The study examined needs for indoor aquatics, indoor courts, indoor turf, and indoor ice. In fiscal year 2015, council approved a capital project to construct a dual-purpose indoor sports facility that included both basketball courts and a two-sheet ice arena. Due to escalation in the initial estimated costs and after assessment of costs to maintain the existing ice arena, council amended the project scope to a two-sheet ice arena only in 2017. The budget page, the next page, shows the cost breakdown for this project. The total cost is as presented in last year's capital investment program. The breakdown of costs by fiscal year has been updated to reflect the actual obligations and expenditures to date and updates to our future planned spending. Fiscal 20 includes plan review and permitting, additional design and project management fees, costs for the construction contract, utility extension costs, and some additional construction contingency funds. Fiscal year 21 includes some additional design and project management fees, including the, what we call the building commissioning process. Includes furniture and outfitting costs and some additional project contingency. And finally, a small project contingency in fiscal year 22 when the project will be complete. And at the bottom of the sheet is the funding summary that shows how the project is being funded, partly mostly with debt and then with general revenues.
Any questions of Mr. Stephanos or us regarding this Iceplex? Project work replaces the old ice rink. If there aren't any questions, I'd like for Mr. Matthews to review quickly the capital projects fund.
Thank you, Al. On page 163, how the capital project fund is used. The capital project fund works in conjunction with, but is not the same as a capital improvement program. The CIP is a six-year plan, which council adopts in the form of a resolution to authorize improvement or acquisition projects. The current budget year proportions of that plan must be funded by amounts appropriated in the annual budget ordinance. Capital project fund receives appropriations for projects that serve governmental purposes and are not accounted for in enterprise fund, such as water and sewer. So council and mayor, basically, this tells you the revenue sources that we're using to fund the capital improvement projects. We're going to be using $105,500 from the appropriated fund balance. The transfer from the general fund has changed from $3,681,600 to $4,997,600. That's the change for the Bowie Iceplex. And in addition, a change in the other revenues to $821,000, which represents a small portion of the debt that we use to finance that project. On page 164 gives you a line item of how those dollars are generated. On the general fund transfer, we would have to add the Iceplex down at the bottom for the $1,316,000, which brings that total to the $4,997,600 I referred to earlier. On page 165, we talk about the monies that we receive from governmental revenues. And that's normally state and federal. In this case, we have the open space grant for $737,600. And the senior center bond bill is an outstanding amount on the original bond bill of $8,700. The next revenue source is the interest income and how we are allocating that over several projects. The next line is the geo bonds. And that concludes the revenue. The grand total of the revenue as adjusted will be $6,670,400. The next page on 166 is the expenditure appropriation. It just provides a list of all of the projects that Al just talked about and gives you the full dollar amount. Again, the appropriation summary on page 167 gives you more of the dollar amount plus the text that lays out what is actually being done on each project. And just reiterates how we're spending those funds. And with that, I conclude.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'd like to, I'd like to say one thing about, you know, we, it's a phenomenal thing that we've gone 11 years without a rate increase. And, but the reason, the fact that we haven't is the reason why we have to use so much of the fund balance. So I just want to make sure we had that. We're almost done here with this. And who's next, who do we have next year, next week?
That would be Community Service.
Public Works. Well, Mr. Mayor and City Council, that concludes our work for the night in work session. And Public Works is on, is on tap for next Monday. Any questions of us so far about any of the CIP projects? Have to answer.
No, I would like to say thank you to you and the staff for the revision of the budget. If we could, City Manager, is it possible? I know I wrote down in some, if we could get a couple of change pages for that information that we got tonight, if that would be possible?
Yes, we'll, we'll, we sent the email to you. We'll print out some copies and put it in your box or whatever works for you, sir.
Okay, so all the pages, I didn't see that when I went through it. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we just provided you just the one page change for the Iceplex. It does have a domino effect on the other pages. But the more important page tonight was just the Iceplex page. When we get to the, when we get to the adoption of the budget, then all of those pages will be revised with the numbers.
Sounds great. Thank you.
So, and when we get to next week, what we'll do? Sorry?
I'm sorry, we have a lag. I apologize for the trampling on that. The question I have for you is the, the discussion we had on the stormwater management that's associated with the Chesapeake Bay. Would staff fit with legal counsel? And I can see if there is in fact any way where we can redirect some of those expenditures, excuse me, some of the costs through those specific taxing districts. There are a couple million dollars' worth of things that are federal fund. I'd rather seek of funding elsewhere.
We'll take, we'll talk to the city attorney, see if we have any recourse with that particular expense, sir. Certainly will. And we'll let you know. Any other questions, Mr. Mayor? Any from, from the group?
Just want to say a big thank you to staff on the call for taking through the first one of the fourth budget session.
Well, I encourage, this is a great budget book. The best one I've seen in the four cities I've worked in. And Barnes, they're really good at that. Well, we're looking forward to, excited about the next time we get a chance to go through budget. It's all yours, Mr. Mayor.
Any other question? Ask the school members, any other question? Please, sir. If not.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion adjourned.
I'd like to second that motion.
Second is second.
It's been moved and properly second.
All in favor?
And I will for discussion. Again, thank you to everyone for your time and energy. And again, to city staff, we appreciate all you do. It's been moved and properly second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Everyone, take care. Take care.
Hey, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
You do the same.
And please, good night.
Good night, DuFour. Good night, Ingrid. Good night, Mr. Mayor. Good night, Michael.
Good night, good night.
And you again.
All right, guys, good night.
Thanks, good evening.
You got it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again. All right.